...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall?
Here.
Dr. Feig?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here.
All present, is there citizens comments?
We have no comment cards this evening.
Presentation?
The first item we have is a special presentation, we have Mr. Dick Davis here this evening, representing the Westmoreland Chapter of the Pennsylvania Association of School Retirees. Every year that group presents a mini grant to a practitioner in the county, and this year's recipient was our Jenna Hickson, so Mr. Davis will turn the podium to you.
First of all, it's nice to be in Southmoreland, and this is a beautiful building. It's gorgeous, and I wish I had a child in this kind of building. And it's a tribute to the board and to the superintendent, Mr. Moll, Dr. Moll. As he said, my name is Dick Davis, I'm an administrator for about 23 years, I'm a principal at the NFR9, and I was assistant superintendent at Penn Draper for 13, and now I'm sort of retiring, I'm working for the University of Pittsburgh, so if you know the difference, you can tell us, we always talk about that. Today I'm representing the Westmoreland County Association of School Retirees, and last year, we started a program called Practitioner Grant, and what we wanted to do is to provide some, a small amount of money, that a teacher could use it for a special project that she had. And we worked with the Jeanette School District last year, and as you all know, I started at Jeanette, so it was something that I felt we could handle in that situation. And Southmoreland, I know quite a bit about, one of my good friends was Walt Keibler, and I think many of you might know Walt, he was an administrator here for a long time. And he and I were great friends, and we used to do a little consulting together, matter of fact, we consulted at Southmoreland High School a couple times. So it's been, it's my pleasure to be here at Southmoreland. But today, we want to present a Practitioner Grant to Jenna Hickson, and Jenna wrote a grant that's very interesting to me. It's a grant regarding reading, and as we all know, one of the basic things you need in a school district is to have a really good solid reading program, and probably math program, and then, although I'm a social studies teacher, then we can sort of tag along after that, when you get those two things done. So it's my pleasure to present Jenna, and I wanted to say one other thing, we have a $300 grant for her, and she has a real good way to use it.
So, Mrs. Hickson.
This year I wanted to try to do a project that would involve my classroom, and also the community, and also support reading. So I found this organization called Book Crossing, and it's a way for people to share books. Once you've read a book, instead of just putting it on your bookshelf, you leave it in a random spot in the community, and you put a sticker on it that says "I'm free, not lost." So I thought this was a really neat idea, so I thought, wouldn't it be neat if the books that I already read in the classroom with my students, if we could share those books with the community, and invite people to read along with us? So with the grant, I was able to purchase 50 books, including To Kill a Mockingbird, Tuesdays with Maury, Of Mice and Men, Romeo and Juliet, and all the books we'll be reading for the rest of the year. So in class, the kids wrote letters explaining what the book's about, and why people should read it, and now they're excited, they're going to put them out in the community in different locations, so when people find it, they're invited to read along with us. So it gets the community involved, the kids are excited about it, and I think it's just a great way to promote literacy.
Excellent, thank you. On behalf of the district, I'd like to congratulate Jenna, I think that's a very creative idea, and a good way to get folks involved, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Davis and his organization for funding this project for us. Thank you both very much, and Jenna, again, congratulations to you, good work.
Minutes?
At the voting meeting, you will be asked to approve the minutes of the February 2nd and February 9th, 2012 meeting.
Finance?
I spoke to Mr. Kenny today, Mr. Kenny is not prepared to come before us at this
accounting, but this word "fund balance" was foreign, never heard of it, never fully
time, he and Mr. Salem and bond council are still working to get all the paperwork together
understood it. But as I learned, it's a concept, founded in governmental power.
for the bond refinance, so there was nothing new to report, so he will not be here today.
Treasurers report?
So what I want to do is explain a little bit about fund balance, one of the easiest
You'll be asked to approve the treasures report and the bills payable for the, at
ways I can explain things is to use a real life example, okay?
the March 9th voting meeting.
Bill Salem, financial presentation?
Just on Mr. Salem, has a presentation, he wanted to talk to us a little bit about
Let's say, you know, on our first month, we have a monthly salary of $3,000.
our fund balance, and exactly what a fund balance is, and where ours stands, so I would
In that month, we had expenses of $2,500. Naturally left over of any good business, now you're going to be able to tell you, it's
invite the board to have a seat down here at the front table, and we'll lower the screen, and let Mr. Salem take the podium.
$500 in your balance. So the amount that's left over in that first month is equivalent basically to a fund balance, you know, it's our savings. Month two, with the same salary, same expenses, same balance at the end of the month. That balance rolls into the old balance, so that the new fund balance is $1,000. Now, on our way home from work at the last day of the month, we have a little accident. I don't know if you all can see that in the back, but truck parked to a train, and so now the question is, how much is in our fund balance? We had $1,000 in there, but now we have to pay the car fix, or at least put a nominee on a new car, pay the deductible on the insurance for something. But we had $1,000 in our fund balance, but now it's kind of questionable how much we really have. The annual financial report is a snapshot of the voting in time. In our case, last time we reported, reported was about our AFR, it was June 30, 2011. On that day, we had a fund balance of almost $8 million. The fund balance is broken down into five components, the non-spendable fund balance, the restricted, the committed, the assigned, the unassigned. The committed was earmarked for early retirement incentive grants, go there by the board, by board vote, it can only be moved by board vote. The assigned fund balance is assigned by an official of the board, namely the business board. And then the unassigned fund balance is that which can be used for training. So out of that $8 million, how much of it can we spend? Well, we set aside almost $1.4 million for the early retirement incentive. Finish swap in New York, that is going to cost about $900,000. The maintenance code is going to cost about $900,000. The drainage pipe at the stadium, you know, estimates maybe $300,000. Potentially tax reassessment appeals are pending, $460,000, and we may decide to air condition the primary incentive. Of those total earmarks, in total, $4.7 million, all worthy expenses, all able to come out of the fund balance, which leaves us a net fund balance of $3.3 million. So I'm trying to say, it's going to expect to have an $8 million fund balance next June 30. But don't forget, we have a future's contract yet to set. This year our insurance premium is going to be at least $200,000. Revenue rate hikes up 41 percent. 36 percent next year, and 27 percent the year after that. The cumulative total increase from current dollars we're paying into the future's fund is $2.6 million. That's over and above what we're paying now, what we have paid. So another potential use of the fund balance might be to cover budget deficits in the future, but we're going to keep ampered by our ability, inability, rather, to raise taxes because of Act One. Act One is the, the law was passed a few years ago, saying that if you only raise taxes up to a certain index, and raising them above that index is not allowed, must be applied by a referendum, or an exception. The $8 million fund balance from June 30 was built in there. That's when we made the payment of taxes from '07, which is gone. Governor Corbett's office and our funding, was built during a time of more stable economy. So having said all that, I want to give you an example of the ABC School District. The ABC School District in year one has an expenditure budget of $20 million. They have a government subsidy in the amount of $10 million. Local taxes raised $9 million, which means they have a $1 million deficit that they have to fund. Well, the school board sees that we have a $3 million fund balance, so rather than put any more burden on taxpayers, let's just fund that deficit by taking money out of fund balance. So they do. In year two, you can see the expenditure budget up 5 percent. Government subsidies didn't change much like our budget this year. Local taxes, well, the school board still doesn't want to take money out of the fund balance to complete the budget, because, well, we still have a $2 million fund balance. So in order to cover the $2 million deficit, the school board goes to take $2 million out of the fund balance. Now in the third year, expenditures go up another 5 percent. Same government subsidies, same local taxes, but now we have a $3 million deficit. The problem in the third year is that, due to Act One, the school board can't raise taxes enough to cover that deficit. They're limited, their ability to raise taxes. So what has to happen is, they have to make cuts. You know, the Act One stipulates to prevent the ABC School District from raising the mileage enough to balance the budget and maintain the education program in the third year. At that time, even difficult cuts, cuts are going to have to be made in order to balance the budget. I hate to say it, but the short-term focus on the mileage rates produces long-term damage to the education program. Now I took this from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and it's in the PDE Financial Data Elements page on their website, and these are all the, all the school districts in Westmoreland County. And as you know, there are 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, and the rankings that you see are how each of these school districts rank within the state. The first column is called the heat ratio. The heat ratio is the nature of the general wealth of the school district, it's comprised of the market value and personal income of the residents. You see, Southmoreland's heat ratio is .6423. That means we're the 100th poorest district in the state. We're working a little bit, by the way, we're the 317 wealthiest district in the state. Our ABMs, or average daily membership, how many students we have? About 2,092 students. We're right in the middle of the pack, 272 out of 500. And then our expenditures per ABM, that's how much we spend per child, we spend $12,588 per student, that makes us $312. Now, the light green one that I have highlighted there, is of particular interest to me, it's called equalized mileage. Equalized miles, which, you know, every county in the state has a different assessment. LA County did it 2002, now, I think Bay County had one in 2005, but the last time Westmoreland County was assessed was, I think, 1968. But anyhow, every county has different assessed values, so it's difficult to measure one against the other. So what the state came up with is equalized miles, and what that does is, it measures a, what your tax rate is per dollar of tax revenue generated, and it allows you to compare school districts across the state, as far as what their relative tax burden is. And as you can see, our relative tax burden across the state is number 280. So again, we're right about in the middle of the pack, as far as our relative tax burden goes. Now, looking back at the history of taxes here in Southmoreland, the last time we raised taxes was in 2004, 2005. That time we raised it 15 percent, which was speaking unheard of then, in this day and age. But that was the last time taxes were raised, 2004, 2005. We averaged over that, over those eight years, 1.18 miles per year. We were raising 1.18 miles every year, and ended up with the same thing. It's an average of 1.9 percent a year. And if you compare that to inflation, consumer pricing next, over those eight years, our average tax, our tax, our average tax increase, that's less than inflation. So I guess, what I would like the board to do, to move it forward, is to take all the information and digest it, just go about the budget process, keep in mind that fund balance is not an extreme revenue, okay? It is a savings account that's best used for one-time expenditures or capital improvements. We need to preserve the long-term physical integrity of the district. And use it as a last resort. Any questions? Can I ask off the floor?
Can you put back to any story? Okay, this is my girl. In 2004,5, militaries increased 9.18 miles. They paid that 9.4 miles back, next year, next year, next year, next year. They kept paying that increase every year, all right? They didn't just pay 1.18, they paid 9.4, 9.4, 9.4, 9.4, they just kept paying the 9.4. So I'm not getting the 1.8, because it's not like they didn't pay it, they paid it.
We did pay it, yes.
If you'd have started on the first line with 1.8, put 1.8 all the way down there, you'd have just gotten a little bit of money the first year, and then you got a little more the second.
Right.
But you just kept getting a whole bunch every year, they kept paying that 9.4. So I guess, in my mind, that's not a 1.18 mile increase, because they kept paying. If they only paid that 9.4 once, it went away then, I can see that, but it did go away and kept. So those years, over those six or seven years, it was 50 some.
Yeah, well, I guess, that's not an average. If they, if they increased it by 9.4 miles every year, then I think you're confusing that with an average increase. Well, no, they, they increased 9.4 miles one year, and as stated, it's 9.4 miles.
Yeah, that's why I'm seeing, having trouble with that, because when I pay my personal taxes, it's not the way they came today. I keep paying that 9.4 miles every year. It's okay, though.
But it hasn't increased excessively. Yeah. Any other questions from here? Anybody?
Steven.
Okay, Steven.
More of a comment, when I look at that 2004, 2005, a comment was made about this building. We have this building because of that mileage increase, and it wasn't on the board at that time, but I think it was, I think very much of people on the board who raised the taxes, and we have a very good facility. Having said that, though, I, I don't see the cap that this legislature's placed on us at what is 2.4, sorry, 2.4. I don't see it in as negative a light as perhaps you're presenting here. I see that as saying, we do not want to jolt with the, with these increases. We should, if we need increases, we should take small incremental increases, year by year, and we should protect the fund balance, and all for that. But these, these huge increases, they're not good, they're not good for the credibility of public education, because the citizens really feel it when they're going to get to that kind of level. And I see it serious enough for willing people, and if you want to go up above 2.4, we can put a referendum, and the people decide. I don't see that as being such a bad thing. I know it's a very difficult thing to pass, I mean, I grew up in Ohio, and so I know what those are all about, just to keep in mind.
Well, you're right, you're right, that 15 percent, 9.4 miles in one year, that's a lot of small, and I wouldn't be surprised if that's what brought a lot of people back up, and that happened, and why a lot of people became, how would you say, activists at that time. Currently, you wouldn't be allowed to raise taxes 1.8, 1.8 miles, because that's below the index. Problem is this, if we raise taxes the most we can, 2.4 percent, that's going to generate $180,000 in additional income this year. Our health insurance alone has gone up $100,000. Our pension contributions have gone up almost $400,000. There's $600,000 in increased expenditures, and we're only allowed to raise revenue, an additional $180,000 in revenue. Where's the balance coming from? I mean, thank goodness, you know, we're, we're in a good spot, you know, we're in a good spot right here. Mr. Porter obviously said, we're going to go a lot longer than some of the other districts. But just be mindful of, you know, how we got here, and where we have to go, and the financial, and the financial hoops we have to jump through to get there.
I'm talking to the, 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 the mail today, that ESPN, by the way, my husband sent in a word for that, and we got a mail.
I'll give you some of my bills, I'll send you.
It's a 42.5 percent, you have 41, it's a 42.5.
It's a pretty high one. It's, it's, it's Friday, and there again, you know, the governor made us, made us be fiscally responsible for the prior administrations' irresponsibility. They didn't, the state, the state matches us, the state pays half our retirement contributions, and the state didn't have the revenue to do it, and so they just pushed it off. And now Governor Corbett's saying, we're not pushing it off, now you have to meet it, and now it's hurting, and that's, that's the kind of job we're in.
Yes. If our expenditures didn't go up based on the 9.4 mile increase, how much would our fund balance grow if we, our expenditures?
Well, the reason I ask that is, how did we get to the huge amount of fund balance we haven't had a raise in eight years? So what's generating all that money that we're getting because of leaving Howard, and not terminating anybody, or letting anybody walk? I mean, Mr. Albers?
We have reduced positions significantly, nutrition, we have laid a lot of talk, but we've reduced, I don't have the figures in front of me, but we've reduced our positions.
What about town reasons, and people coming in new?
Right. But anyway, what, what are we growing by?
What was our budget growing by?
Yeah, because of 9.4 miles, I mean, we, we haven't had a raise in the mileage since 4.5. So how, how do we keep growing?
The expenditure budget here in year one was 20 million, this is an ABC School District, but year one was 20 million, year two was 21 million, year three is 22 million.
Yeah, but I'm talking about us, you know. How are we growing so much fund balance if we didn't have any raises? And we did it.
Are you saying, growing expenditures or growing fund balance?
I'm, I'm saying, fund balance. Our expenditures have grown, and our fund balance has grown. What is generating that both of them are growing, but our fund balance keeps going up about $1 million every year?
Well, actually, costs have increased, health insurance costs have increased.
I'm wanting to ask the taxing of expenditure, a lot of the increase in the fund balance, how does that keep growing?
We had buyouts.
And buyouts take us $9 million?
I want to make a point, I ask you, how many years have they had buyouts, all the huge hours required, do you have any idea?
I say, 30. So that's, that's seven years? You know, what can grow, seven years?
If you keep investing your money, this quarter was good, and we did, and built a good budget. Consistently overestimated revenues, overestimated expenditures, underestimated revenues.
It needs to be grateful.
That's what budgeting, I think, how much is, is spoken to in the competition, but it was good. I think you needed, back in the year one or four years ago, there was, I don't know what the fund balance was at that point, but back at the turn of this century, when I was on, we still had a very good fund balance, thanks to Mr. Porter.
What is generating that both of them are growing, but our fund balance keeps going up about a million dollars every year?
Well, as the costs have increased, health insurance costs have increased.
I'm wondering how the taxing of expenditure, a likely increase in the fund balance, how does that keep growing?
We had buyouts.
And buyouts take us 90 million dollars? How many years have they had buyouts? Oh, huge hours, quarters, you got any idea?
I'd say three to four years.
So that's seven years? You know, what can grow seven years if you were?
If you keep investing your money, this quarter was good than we did. Built a good budget. Consistently overestimated revenues, overestimated expenditures, underestimated revenues.
It needs to be grateful.
That's what budgeting, I think, how much is supposed to be, but it was good.
I think you needed, back in the year one or four years ago, there was, I don't know what the fund balance was at that point, but back at the turn of this century, when I was on, we still had a very good fund balance thanks to Mr. Porter. So it's not as though this 8 million was growing in the last three years or in the last two years. See, I don't know how it was at the time.
Well, I disagree with you literally, Mike, because when I first got on the board four years ago, five years ago, whatever it was, when we asked Bill Porter what the fund balance was, it was between 1 and 2 million dollars. So in the last four years, according to Bill Porter, we've grown 7 million dollars, 6 million dollars.
Who is it breaking out though? Forty-seven hundred?
It's hard to say because the fund balance is a snapshot at the time. You have monies coming in and money coming out all the time. You get sales numbers, subsidies, you get pension payers that have to be made. There's always monies going in and monies going out. But when we talk about evening our fund balance, that's not necessarily true because we have, you know, these expenditures, we set aside 1.4 million of that for early markets. You pay off the spot that we are in the mainest building. We don't know how much that drink pack's going to cost us down the football field. There's, it's not 8 million dollars.
Thank God we had the ability to build facilities like this and put together a 8th and junior high, build a maintenance building. Thank God we have. The guy did a good job. And this district and in my office. Any other questions? Thanks.
Southwest Regional Tax Bureau. Every year we get a request from our taxing agencies requesting permission to authorize the purchase of confidential taxpayer information for the year, hence this year Southwest Region is asking for the records for 2010. They are authorized to do this by law and I believe the point of it is to help them collect some of their delinquent taxes. So we would recommend at the next meeting that you authorize them to purchase those records. Again, those records do not come to us, they come directly from the Department of Revenue to Southwest Regional and do not come to us at all.
Do we know how much that is? Their fee?
Whatever their fee is, Southwest Regional reimburses us. So all we have to do is grant permission to do it, right.
Budget and finance meeting?
We would like to schedule a budget and finance meeting for either late March or early April. So is there some discussion on when that might be a good day for?
I would like to see it in March.
March 28?
Are we going to hold them on Thursday nights?
That's up to this group.
I don't care, I was just wondering.
28?
That's a Wednesday.
I don't know.
Wednesday, March 28 is a Wednesday.
Not good for you?
No, good for me.
Monday, it's not good for me.
Oh, what was Monday, the 26th?
26th.
29th is the Thursday, Monday is the 26th.
I can't be here on the 29th, but the majority, don't plant it around me. 26th is fine.
Would you say Monday?
Monday.
Good time.
Seven o'clock. And we'll do that here. I was at a, I was at a training in Harrisburg Superintendent's Academy and one of the ideas that was presented to us, I thought it was a pretty good idea. We had Mr. Salem's presentation. We can do a little bit more work on the draft budget and get that out to board members and perhaps he can get it up on our website. And the notion that was presented there was rather than have a formal meeting like this, we put a couple of board members and an administrator at several tables and make a roundtable discussion. That way individuals who are not comfortable speaking at the podium but might have some input would be able to come, give their input. The administrator would be tasked then with recording whatever information was given. That information would be compiled, we could again put that on our website, compile it for board members. And then we could have a public from the podium comment session at the following planning meeting. That was an idea that was presented that has worked in a number of districts. Thought it might be a nice way to try it here, that we could entertain some discussion on that as well. Mrs. Kaufman, I believe you're the finance chair.
That's fine with me and one if I gave Dr. Molnar, when we went out to her, she also, the superintendent out there, Hemphill School District, not Hemphill area, but the Hemphill School District, they did that as well. So Dr. Molnar can maybe contact that superintendent if you have any more questions or... All we can do is try it once, try it once and see if we don't like it, we think of that.
How does that work? Suppose you put me at a table with somebody and they ask me a question about high school. How could I answer?
Well, we would be with them.
That's why we're going to have administrators available as well. And it's an informal roundtable, so if someone asks a question about a high school that someone at your table can't answer, then they can walk to the next table and get that answered.
I just think that when we talk about something as big as a budget, it applies to the entire district from a great big perspective, not a bunch of little ones. For example, you look at staffing levels, you look at debt services, you look at the big pictures of how we're going to... Okay, you're sitting at a table and somebody says, "I don't want a tax increase." How do you answer them, you know, at a table?
And again, what, the purpose of the meeting, Dr. Feig, is not necessarily to answer or debate, but rather to gather public input. So the administrator, you know, we could answer general budgets about, general questions about the budget and what each line item represents. And if the taxpayer says, "I don't want a tax increase and I think we should eliminate food, service, transportation and lighting," for example, then the administrator would be tasked with writing that idea down and bringing it back to the full board. I use that as a far-fetched example.
And they're putting, getting their input and we can make a report of everyone's suggestions and see what's good, what's not good. I mean, four-day work week in the summer is just an idea, you know what I mean, to save money on electricity and, you know, salaries and all that. I mean, it's just, just an idea of getting them all together.
Seems like an inclusive way to gather a lot of community input.
We'd have to meet again, we'd probably have to meet two or two more times probably.
Correct. This would not be the only meeting, nor would be the final meeting.
Are there enough roundtables here? Because I see the rectangular ones or should we have?
We could use rectangular tables as well, yeah. Roundtable, yeah.
Because I know the high schools are roundtables and it's kind of...
Right, right. Okay, March 26th, seven o'clock, finance meeting here.
Oh, business?
We are not going to vote on these policies because we don't have our 30-day posting period in yet. We'll vote on them at the April meetings. But at this point in time, we can discuss, if further discussion is necessary, policy 703, 821 or 210.1. 703 being sanitary management, 821 being classroom decorum, 210.1 being inhalers and epi pens. The administration did get together and discuss policy 703, sanitary management, and that was having to do with food and beverage being brought into the gym. And it was the feeling of the administrative team, as well as the administrative and management team, that we are very much in favor of having beverages available for athletes in the gymnasiums. We were not in favor of having food and drink in the stands for spectators. And one of the reasons for that is just from a management and supervision of pupil standpoint, when things like that come into the gym, it's very difficult to control what's coming in. Especially in terms of contraband that might be coming in, spiked Gatorade and things of that nature. So we would prefer that anything that is consumed on site would be purchased and consumed in a supervised lobby area. But that was the feeling of our management team. We could certainly open that for discussion at the board level as well.
Can I bring up something under old business?
Well, if we're done talking policy?
I'd like to, and I think the athletic director, maybe this is to him. In other schools, I think I've raised this at various times, I'm just kind of curious, in other, you travel around the WPIA schools and I'm a WPL, Western Pennsylvania here schools. And I think I'm, frankly, I'm bringing Ohio schools and I go to a number because of relatives and there it's common to bring. And so I'm just wondering, in other schools, is it uncommon for the spectators to have refreshments in the stands? And just, maybe just give a little feeling for us of how it works out in other schools here.
Yeah, for most of the other schools you go to, almost all of them prohibit food in the gym.
Or what?
They prohibit food or drinks in the gym. I started looking when we talked about the policy. Again, what we were really looking at was more for the athletes.
Yeah.
And we were looking as far as, and they brought up some good points the principals had that I really hadn't thought of. And when you look at it, you know, probably some of the stuff that can be brought in the gym, we opened it up, we opened ourselves up to some other issues. Most gyms in the WPL don't allow free drinking.
Other discussion on those three policies. Dr. Feig?
In our packet, we got these, very nice recognition from the people. We had placed books in the library and I just thought it was very touching that this appears to be such a positive thing for these families, Jack. They seem to really like the concept of having something in the school for their people as a memorial. And I think it was a wonderful suggestion that we do it this way. And this to me was real verification of how much these people appreciate that, much more than flowers. I just want to say, I think it's a really nice thing that we're doing.
Thank you. Just to fill anyone in who doesn't know quite what we were discussing here. Previously, when a staff member or a staff member's immediate family passed away, we had always done a floral tribute. And we decided maybe a year, a year and a half ago, rather than doing a floral tribute, to do a lasting tribute by dedicating books in the library with a memorial plate to the loved one. And I think that's what Dr. Feig is referring to. And we have gotten a lot of positive feedback on that, so we're happy to do that.
New business discussion?
In your packet, I included the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit budget. You will be asked to vote on that budget at the next meeting. It's a rather large document. The page that is probably the most pertinent to us is district contributions and that is found, I believe, on page 52. And Southmoreland's contribution to the intermediate unit budget for the current year, 11/12, is That's on page 51.
That's correct, Mike, it is on page 51.
And our projected 12/13 contribution would be $12,056.13. So actually we went up by about $2, $1.95 would be the increase in our contribution to the general operating budget of the IU. And as Dr. Feig has pointed out on a couple of occasions, this budget provides the services that come out of the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Building. It provides some in-service training, some staff training. It provides all the clerical and management kinds of things that they do. The special ed services that are provided to various districts, including ours, are additional purchase services and are not part of the general operating budget. So you'll be asked to vote on the general budget. Are there questions or discussion on that? Doctor, you're on the board, you may want to add more than I did there.
Yes, if you look at the total of this operating budget, it's around $5 million. But the IU budget is about $55 million. The rest of it is special ed. So this is just that building up there in Greensburg. And they mostly focus on services such as curriculum, the human resources, the technology. They're the ones developing the E-Academy programs that we've heard a lot about. They have, they have, of course, their buildings that they have to maintain too. But basically, this is not the special education budget, this is the functioning budget for the core unit up there in Greensburg. And it only represents about, will it be about 10% then, I guess, of all their expenditures? They try to keep it very lean.
Primarily, this covers administration, curriculum services, instructional material services and data processing. Other discussion on that? You will be asked to either vote to approve that budget or disapprove it at the voting meeting. It's necessary to schedule entrance and exit meetings with our coaches. We would like to do that. Our suggestion would be to do that this coming Monday or Tuesday so that we can get that finished in a timely manner. Is there discussion on which day might be better for you folks?
What are those sports? What are those sports, Jack?
Charlie, winter sports are and spring sports are. Help me out here. I know most of them, but I'll miss a couple.
What, boys and girls basketball?
Basketball.
And wrestling? Spring sports be baseball, softball, track, defense. The first day of spring sport starts March 5th, so that's one of the reasons.
So that'd be like seven interviews, right?
Right.
Like seven.
Would it be easier on the coaches if we do it on Tuesday? It wouldn't be their first day or?
The spring's first practice, official practice is March 5th. So we would do it before they started their first official practice next week. We get them next week out before their practice.
Right, I just, okay, I thought, am I looking at, so the 5th would be the first day that they would be out on the fields practicing?
Yeah, that's the first mandatory day of practice.
I'm not pushing for one, I just thought it might be easier for the coaches if it'd be on the second day than the first, but it might not be.
Yeah, March 5th is Monday and March 6th is Tuesday.
Monday is the 5th, Tuesday is the 6th.
Yeah. March 6th, all right with everybody, Tuesday? All right, we will do that in my office, folks, at the administration building.
We started earlier, didn't we, Jack, on these?
Yeah, we started those at 6:30, I believe. Does that work for everybody? 6:30? We can come earlier if need be.
Can we do 6:30?
Brock, shit, does that work for you? Time-wise? 6:30. Okay, I have a couple items that I need to walk on that are not on your agenda, they just came up within the last couple of days. Our business office would like you to vote to give them permission to advertise bids for the 12/13 school year. The separate bids would be for the athletic department, the maintenance department, general and art supplies. would be for the Athletic Department, the Maintenance Department, General and Art Supplies. Our requests for bids are published in the Independent Observer, the Daily Courier, and the Tribune Review at dates that would be determined. So we would ask that you would grant permission to advertise for those items. The next item I have deals with PMA Regional Orchestra. I have a letter from Jamie Gore. She's asking permission for three students and herself to be on an overnight trip at the PA and PA Regional Orchestra Festival. The three high school students who qualified there are Connor Johnson, Samuel Ellenberger, and Sarah Thompson. That will occur on March 21st through March 23rd at Mars Area High School in Mars, PA. It's about an hour and 15-minute drive from here. They would need to leave at 1:30 PM on March 21st for the auditions and placements at State's, and then rehearsals run from 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM. So they're asking to stay overnight. Student accommodations are included in the registration cost, which is $125 apiece. The chaperones are the Mars Area music teachers, music teachers from other local districts, and band boosters with clearances. Transportation for students between the hotels provided by the Mars Area School District. So the only transportation we would need to provide would be getting our students from Southmoreland to Mars. They would travel home with their parents after the concert. So we would ask you to approve that trip at the voting meeting.
Jack, she doesn't take them?
In her private vehicle, even?
Yeah, does she take them?
No, we don't send kids in private vehicles.
So she goes in her car?
She would go in her car and transport herself. We would send a van with a driver, You have a letter in your packet from John Tomasini. I'll ask Mr. Clare if he would talk to you a little bit about that letter and exactly what it means.
Last year, we were, sometimes it's a lonely principal, you're so loud, you don't actually think about using the microphone. Last year, we were one of the schools that was selected, one of the districts that was selected for an audit by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for Special Education. We had a very good report last year, but there were a few areas that they asked us to correct during this school year. I addressed those areas with our staff, as I've accepted the role of Director of Special Ed this year. And some of those areas include parental involvement, parental surveys, and a few other things that we needed to do better. And we have done that. We met the requirements of the state. And Mr. Tomasini informed us this week, after our review last week, that we had achieved that status. So I'm very proud of my staff and of all the work that they did. And they certainly do excellent work with our students.
I'd like to thank Dan and his staff, both clerical and instructional. There was a lot of work that went into both getting ready for this monitoring visit and then also making the corrections that needed to be made. So I thank them and appreciate the work they did. I did include in your packet a special education report. It's a colored sheet. It's called Special Education Data Report. It's for the school year 910. I just included that as an informational item. Last month, you heard about response to intervention and percentages of special ed students and so on and so forth. So I just thought that would be an interesting document for you to have and look over. And I believe that is all I have this evening for public consumption.
One question, one, do we have any complaints about mold at Rosedale?
There have been some concerns, and I'll ask Mr. Mizwak to address those.
We had PSI come in and do an inspection of air quality, and then their recommendations, we followed up with their recommendations in the building. And they also recommended that we do another one, so we conducted another one last week, and I'm waiting for the test. We did not find any, what they would call target molds. Most of the issues were from being closed up during the summer. So we have a plan for this year, going into this year, to have the building completely closed when it's shut down during the summer. And once we get the next report from PSI, we're going to review that report and see if the recommendations did produce any results.
Do we have any water problem up there?
From the, when I spoke to a representative from PSI, he said throughout Western Pennsylvania this summer, churches, YMCA's, schools that weren't operating 12 months out of the year, were all having the same type of high humidity. And we checked carbon dioxide and humidity the other day. I had a meter, I went back in with a meter or two the next day. Humidity was about 18%. That was really good. And carbon dioxide, we were just checking different rooms. We had a high reading in the cafeteria, but it was completely filled with students at the time. So...
We don't have a leaking of the roof or anything?
No.
Any structural problems?
No.
Or water?
That roof was actually just replaced a couple of years ago, yeah.
We had a slight leak in the hall, but we repaired that. And we've been keeping up with the, you can see, we replaced partial floor in one of the restrooms. The towel was coming up from the moisture just in the concrete because it's an older building.
Ken, this is not something that's new to us. When SES had carpeting, and especially SES, because that's the one I'm familiar with, and the carpeting would be scrubbed, and a room would be closed, there would be some mold growing, then we would always have to take those preventive measures and have the testing done. So...
A few people had talked to me and said they thought there was mold problem.
There's not a mold problem there. There were some, there was some mold there in the late part of the summer, but it was not the black mold. It was kind of more the white mildew, okay? And Lee has HEPA filters on the vacuum cleaners now, and the carpets were actually professionally cleaned with the mildew-resistant shampoo.
We also purchased dehumidifiers when the school opened up down there. And I don't know which group, but one of the groups using the school, they also purchased some dehumidifiers. And we usually, right now, we don't need it, but in the fall, probably in the spring, we'll have to get the dehumidifiers back up and running.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Holt. Anything else for the public portion of our meeting?
I just want to give a praise to, that over the last couple months, the principals had given us reports on all the test results and everything that the kids have been doing. And again, I just want to thank all the teachers, because I know how hard you work. And I drive by Alberton at 5:00 and still see cars there, the elementary school. And I know we don't always get to say it, so I just want to make sure you know we appreciate you and thank you, so...
I would echo that. Thank you, Mrs. Kaufman. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session?
Schedule.
Second?
All those in paper, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you, everyone.